It just helped me to organize this a little bit so I could see. Joan, you had an extra one?
Yep.
Okay.
I continue.
Okay. So, question number three, shall the dividend town charter be amended to change the budget for elected budget proposals, elected resolutions from 50 to 28 as recommended by the Charter Commission? That was pushed forward for consideration. I personally don't think this is one of my priorities. I think 50 is fine. I'd like to hear the best of your suggestions.
Madam President.
Yes.
I supported, I guess, taking a deeper dive into question three, not necessarily based on the numbers, you know, 50 to 28, but essentially using that as the framework for whatever we could come up with potentially at a public hearing for a new number. One of the proposals that Council Hilton originally forwarded to the CRC, which I didn't see a copy of that anywhere here, actually I didn't see any of the stuff that we sent forward to the CRC.
Yes.
Regardless, but one of the proposals that Council Hilton put forward, which I think was a good idea to look at, is actually increasing the signature requirement. So, that was my thought on having that particular question potentially move forward in the event that we might want to change 28 to, say, 250.
And I think at this point it's not absurd to hear her proposal and see if we want to go with the 50 or Trish's proposal, but we have to make decisions. We have to decide this because our timeline is really getting slim.
Madam President, so there were a couple of things that we sent to the Charter Review Commission regarding the FTR process, and they didn't, you know, apparently they were either discussed or not approved or not recommended to go forward. And I think there are a couple of questions here that are related to the FTR to me that are sort of all in one big bum deal, and that in one of those things is the number of signatures.
Do you want to say your proposal now so we can make a decision what goes forward?
Well, I'm not sure that I have a proposal. What I have done, although I was waiting for a point at which this would be on the agenda, is that I actually have gone through all 13 other communities that have either an FTR or an FTR-like process and have identified the number of signatures required, the length of time that you can collect them. I've also identified a number of provisions that they have that seem to address things that we have already run into in terms of charter complaints and lawsuits over the FTR process. So, I was hoping that at some point when we got through this, that we as a council could revisit whether or not we have suggestions for improving the FTR process and sort of doing that as one. I didn't bring them with me tonight because they, I didn't bring all that research because it's not on the agenda, but I'd like to do it. And I will say this, I think it's fair for us to consider this, you know, and I apologize to my fellow counselors for being a little bit wordy here, but, you know, even if you run on a platform, once you're an elected official, the Supreme Court has even ruled that even elected officials, you know, that when people come in front of you, you're entitled to the hope of a fair hearing. And I can tell you that even before our suggestions regarding the FTR reached the CRC, there were any number of letters to the editor from members of the CRC disparaging the ideas, that even thought that we would even consider trying to improve the FTR, identifying and disparaging counselors by name. So, I have to say from my perspective, it doesn't look to me like any of those things got a fair hearing because there was so much public disparagement of them and the people even before we sent those things over. So, at some point, I would like us to be able to think about how we might improve the FTR sort of as a whole rather than trying to take all of these individually.
Second.
All right, so this is going to require another meeting. You all realize that, and that's what I'm trying to say.
I was under the assumption that that's, that our public hearing is when we would be addressing these items.
No, because we have to have specific language that's going to go on the ballot for the public hearing.
Right.
So, we have to make a total decision before the public hearing. So, the ballot questions have to be written out, am I right?
Yep.
After being written out by our legal team.
By Peter.
And it has to be specific when the public hearing comes about. So, all these decisions have to be made by July 20th, by the time we have to advertise, which we're looking into that, I think.
It's a three-week advertisement period.
Three weeks?
Yeah.
That's how Nancy told me, 10 days.
Did she say 10 days?
She said 10 days.
10 days, because we'll never get it in three weeks.
Okay, let me follow up with her office.
Right, Joan, am I right, 10 days? I thought that's what she said because that's how we figured it out.
Okay.
But if it's three weeks, then we have a serious time problem.
All right, no, but it isn't though. I've had this discussion with a few people. I think it's 10 days, so which means that we have to have all this to them by next week, really quickly by next week. Like by, we have to have a meeting Tuesday because they have to write the language and have it advertised by the 16th. Because we're, our meeting is July 26th. So, but I, it's a very confusing process and it's made more confusing as we've gone along, but we have to have the specific language advertised.
Are you away next week? Are you away next week?
I'm not away away, but I'm on vacation for nine days and I wasn't.
You're not away?
No, but I wasn't planning on using my vacation days to do town council stuff. I was planning on spending my vacation days on vacation.
If it's important that we get this done, that we can fit in next week sometime.
I'll be at Monday night's meeting, but I wasn't planning on meeting any other. So, I'll have to see what I have planned.
The motion for these guys was 28, and I didn't quite catch the number that.
Is that 50 right now?
They want 50, they want 28. What was the proposal from?
We didn't really have, only thought that we should change that. See, the question is if we don't change it at all, then we don't have to worry about it.
Well, why don't we just give them 28? What's the difference, 28 or 50? If you can get 28, you can get 50.
Yeah, well, in my opinion, 50.
And let the people, if the people don't think it's good enough, they're not going to vote for it.
Yeah, 50 across the board for candidates too. It's.
If they want 28 in this one, they want to waste one of their 10 on something like this, put it out there, however many we're going to put, because the people are going to say yes or no.
Well, right, and what I was trying to get across was, do we want to, if we want to do five to 10, do we actually want to put this as a priority?
That's the key. It's not a priority. If you can get 28, you can get 50. If you can get 50, you can get 250.
So, what I'm saying is why don't we keep it at 50 and it won't be a question and then we don't have to worry about it.
I'm fine with that, but just to move it along, I would make a motion to do the 28, but if you want to scratch it, I'll make a motion to scratch it. It's up to you guys what you want to do, but if you can get 28, you can get 50. If you can get 50, you can get 250.
This is not necessarily a priority.
It's not really a priority. I'd like to see something more important put on there.
Quite frankly, there's a lot of stuff in these questions that shouldn't be priority for charter changes anyways.
So, so you want to, we're going to have to have another meeting this week, so we'll move that one forward again, and Trish can give us the information next week.
I mean, I think we should address that. I think there's a bunch of FTR sort of related things in here, and I think we should just address them all at once in one thing that we go through, whatever everybody's suggestions are, and decide and that that's what we go forward with if we come to a consensus and think we've found a way to improve the process.
So, you're saying to make all the FTR stuff as one amendment, one change?
I mean, assuming that we agree and we decide to go forward with it, but.
We were pretty together on most of this stuff, so that's why I'm saying.
Okay, so, question eight. Nancy doesn't have like anything written here on question eight. I don't know if anyone else has been keeping good records, but I have question eight is something that we wanted to move forward.
It's on this page too.
Yeah, it's the next page.
Well, because we went six, nine.
Yeah, no, we lumped three of them together because they were, they were not constitutional or whatever, so we've motioned three of them out of that. She went literally right down the line.
Right, but eight, 10, and 11 consensus was to move that forward.
Yes.
Do you all agree?
Yeah, we did, we did it all. One fell swoop right at the end.
So, does anyone want to look at, aid, and decide?
But I think that, since these are all related to the FTR, I think these are all things that could be considered as part of that FTR consideration.
I'll be honest with you, I crossed off one of these. I think it was 10. I'm not sure why. All right, so I wrote, no, well, I crossed off what we were going to move it forward, and I crossed off 10. So, all right, so if we're going to have a meeting next week, then it's foolish for me to even do what I'm doing right now.
No, because they're, I mean, this, I, I'm sorry, I don't.
No, go ahead.
I'm speaking up without being recognized, I apologize. It's just that I see these as being sort of related to the FTR. You know, the first one that the, you know, whether or not there's a statement or should the Budget Committee hold, because all those things now are contained in the existing FTR part of the charter.
Okay, so, for organizational purposes, when we all go home and do our homework, question three, eight, and 10, and 11 may be able to be consolidated, or at least lumped in some kind of language. Do you agree with you?
They could, you know, especially if you're going to do a large overhaul of the FTR process, you could definitely lump it together.
I mean, I don't know, a lot of this is in a large overhaul. It's tweaking, really.
Depends on what you had in mind, what you wanted to do with the FTR process.
Rob, I'm sorry, you wanted to talk, and I just totally said I'd come back and I didn't. Did you want to say something?
I did.
Oh, sit over here with us, I don't.
No, I just, I just wanted to respond really on behalf of the Charter Review Commission about Council Hilton's comments on the process. I can't control what any one individual sends in a letter to the editor or what they may say, just like neither than you can, but the concept that the Charter Review Commission is not giving fair hearings to the people is just absolutely outrageous. We've had something like 30 meetings. They've all been open to the public. Council Hilton was in attendance at at least three of them and chose not to speak. I'm not going to belabor the point, but we're not going to be treated like this. I don't, I can't control, just like you can't control what one person says, but this commission did a good job. I'm proud of its work, and everybody had a fair hearing, and we continue to do that. And in fact, the only person is you, Mrs. President, that actually came to a meeting and engaged in response to a request. You're the only one that actually served as some kind of de facto liaison, and I just, that is not going to go unresponded to, and we'll do this conversation over and over and over again if we have to.
Thank you. Okay, so, where was I? Eight, nine, 11. So.
12.
12, but what I'm thinking is, why don't we just continue on? Why don't we start at 24, because we're going to have another meeting.
No, I liked your idea.
You liked my idea?
Yeah.
All right, I guess I'm just tired. Okay, number 12. So, it was motion to have this, was it, define language and send forward. So, it was, shall the dividend town charter be amended to modify and shorten the description for department head duties and responsibilities and to clarify that the town council may hire department heads, may hire department heads with at-will employment terms without mandatory fixed terms as recommended by the Charter Commission? So, we already had done some of these shortening, if I remember correctly.
We did.
What we proposed was not to put specifics in there, because what happens with the Personnel Board is they really go with those specifics, and we may change our concept of what we want as time goes on. So, if, so Peter, this one is going to go forward, and I think Tony has some of what he suggested, cutting off a lot of things.
Yep.
So, if you want to just work with Tony, and we'll move that one forward.
Okay.
Can I, Madam President?
I would agree.
The only thing I would say is that, I don't necessarily know how I feel about the at-will employment terms part. I mean, that feels like it's essentially tying the, tying the hands of the council in hiring department heads and requiring us to make them at-will without a contract, so.
Well, no, we talked, were you here when we talked about this? Every contract is at-will.
You can, it would give me the authority to do at-will, but you'd also do a contract for a term of years, which would become at-will after the expiration.
Yeah.
Just as long as it's not going to, you know, restrict our options and, you know, limit the pool of people we can hire from.
And I do believe, this came from us, right, Rob? Question 12, it had to have.
Furthermore, I mean, 90%, as we understand, was a request to drop the three-year requirement. This allows you to go longer. We did go to citizen requests that also wanted what they called a morals clause. That is not specifically in this, it was, it's addressed tangentially, but, and I agree with the solicitor, that it gives you, it empowers you. I believe it a lot. A lot of our suggestions are actually trying to empower the town council, but you're not required to do at-will. And frankly, you could go longer than the three years, so this allows you to go either way. I'm not quite sure if there's, you know.
Okay, I just want to make sure we have the flexibility to be able to do what's in the best interest of the town.
It might have originally come from the town administrator. I'm not quite sure which one, but.
Yeah, they definitely passed it forward, but we have definitely spoke about this at several occasions as a council, when we talked about sending forward things. Question 13, shall the, so that's one we're definitely going to do.
I like that one.
Okay, question 13, shall the dividend town charter be amended to appoint the candidate with the next highest number of votes in the last election to serve for the duration of the term of a vacated office as recommended by the Charter Commission? There was a lot of discussion about this last week. Council Hilton did suggest that this may not refer to the treasurer or the town clerk because those are specific requirements and at the time, there's only one or two that run for that. But as far as the town council, the Budget Committee, and the other school committee, we felt that that was fair. Does anyone have any suggestions on that? And I think this is important because this has caused a lot of controversy in the past, so it's written in the charter that we have something to go to, and it doesn't become a political question.
Madam President, I would just say I think that the presence of this question seems to be, to be put forward as though it was a political question. I mean, there was some direct challenge from members of the CRC regarding our appointment to the Budget Committee, and quite frankly, you know, I look at other successful communities, and Newport is one of them, where the town council has the authority to appoint across the board, and they seem to make it work. So, I'm indifferent about this, but I don't necessarily know if it's, in our pursuit of a more perfect form of government, I don't necessarily know if this helps achieve that.
How does the rest of you feel, Joan?
I don't have, I don't have a problem with it as it is if they include what Trish said about the treasurer, you know, putting a special note in there for that, but.
Which excludes the treasurer or the town clerk?
Yeah, because I, you know, I just think that eliminates a lot of issues, you know, when it does come up, somebody steps down or whatever, you put the next highest person in. I don't think anybody can complain about that if we, if we go by that, because that's what the people want, that's the way they voted.
And I mean, Trish has a point. If two people run for, let's say, the treasurer, one may be totally not qualified, that's why the first one was chosen, and the people really didn't have the choice of several to vote for. So, I think that does make a difference. Joan, do you have any problems with this?
I think I've been on the council where it's gone both ways.
Right.
One time it was the next highest, and other times it was a consensus of the council, so.
So, do you have a problem with the highest vote getter except the town clerk and treasurer?
Nope.
Randy, is there one that didn't weigh in on you?
Yeah, I would like to see the next highest across the board.
But I think the town clerk and the town treasurer is very, you only have two candidates, so it's kind of.
As long as they're qualified for the job, I mean, why would we, if they're qualified, you appoint them. If they're not qualified, then you don't appoint.
But in the past, we had.
Do you have to give your qualifications to be a treasurer?
No.
I don't think you do.
You don't, but if the people, if it's a 10.
You can put somebody that doesn't even know how to handle money, but they're running for this position.
In the past, and I'll bring it up, I guess with the town clerk, like Nancy's gotten 5,000 votes, and the second highest has got 200. Does that mean we give that to the second highest? You know, it's, the people didn't really speak as far as I'm concerned. They only had two.
Is there a way to put it out there where there's, so long as there's a certain percentage of the people, so you don't want a 1%, but if it's.
But I don't think I have a problem with excluding those two. I don't know how the rest of you feel.
Well, how about the Budget Committee?
The Budget Committee, there's several people there.
But we appointed them last time instead of going by the next highest vote. I would like to, I'd like to see the next highest vote across the board. That's just my opinion on one vote, so.
I agree on school committee, Budget Committee, town council.
You don't think if, if people put their work in and get their signatures and get a fair amount of votes, that they should be the next in line? I mean, it's one thing if they're totally not qualified, but I don't know. If the people speak, the people speak.
Yeah, if the people speak, it might only 200, because there's only two candidates.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, that's at less than 1%. Let's put a number on it. Let's try to put a number on those two important positions, like the probate judge, you can't be a judge, he's elected, and unless you, somebody could run who's not a judge, he can't get appointed because he doesn't go by state law. So, we just, we need a qualification of some sort.
But that's just, I'm one of seven, so that's just my opinion.
Does anyone, does this include the municipal court judge? If he's an elected judge.
Probate court judges.
No, no, no.
Probate judge, well, the probate judge is.
Probate judge, right. But in order to be a probate judge, you have to have been an attorney before.
Right.
Because I thought otherwise, and I looked into it, because that's why I was, I was concerned about that, because I'd run for probate judge. If he quits, I'm in, and it's, no, it doesn't work that way. You have to be.
So, do you guys want to think about this moving forward and think about it, or do you want to make a motion? I'll make a motion right now when I feel, but it's up to you guys.
We'll make your motion, see if you get a second.
All right, I'd like to make a motion if this goes forward, excluding the appointment of the town clerk and town treasurer. Do I have a second? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Well, I think she has.
Has a question.
It had to do with the probate judge, that's all.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, four. So, we'll put this, that's a definite one, Peter. Go ahead, Donna, you want to talk about? Donna, did you want to say something?
No, I just wanted to say the probate judge or even the municipal judge has to be part of that Rhode Island bar.
Right.
It's in the charter that way.
So, that's a little different because they have to have those.
Yeah, it can't just be anybody.
Thank you, Donna.
But you could have two lawyers running for probate.
Correct.
And it would be the next lawyer.
Yeah. Go ahead, Rob.
Just real quick, and again, my plan is not to actually get up unless you have a specific question, but if I hear something about the Charter Review Commission, I will get up, and I just want to clarify that.
Did we say something about you guys?
Well, there was this innovation that it had something to do with the challenge to the Budget Committee. This particular proposal came from three different proposals, and one of them was, I'm not sure which was the sponsor, but from within the Charter Review Commission, but one of the other two was from the current chair of the Budget Commission, so I just want to make sure that the Budget Committee.
Yeah, I know.
Clear, this is not like just coming from the CRC. Thank you.
Yeah, you want to respond? No, okay. Go ahead.
Rather than going back and forth all night, you know, to Rob's earlier point, I realize that the chair of the commission can't control individual letter writers, but when the letter writers are more than one, when it's multiple people on the commission that are expressing a bias before they even see the material, then I think I'm entitled to my opinion. The second thing is, you may feel that you want to get up here every time somebody says something that you take affront to about the Charter Review Commission. You're right, I did attend a number of those meetings, and no, I didn't speak, but in many cases, not necessarily the chair, but many commission members, said some of the most disparaging things about the council on an absolutely regular basis, and not once did we come over to you and complain and say, you know, you shouldn't speak about the council this way. So, you know, if we're going to go back and forth, then we can all watch the tapes and we can keep track of how many times somebody said something that was really insulting to the other body, but it feels a little bit like you're in a glass house throwing stones, given that I did watch a number of the tapes and I did sit at the meetings, and again, not all the members, but there were certain members who regularly attacked the town council when we weren't at the Charter Review Commission meetings, and I don't think it will be helpful all night long for us to go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. We'll try and just be respectful of the work that each other needs to do.
Okay, question 14, although we had a pig debate on that one, and we liked some of it. Counselor Hilton motion to move A and B for further consideration and legal information. Counselor Shabbat added, First Amendment rights and employees and officials have the same rights. Chattering with old technology now have email, Facebook, motion passed. So, we liked the beginning concept of all of this, but we didn't like the end. And that was when, and John was in here, this was an example that was given, that if a group of people have a, have a list that they're calling or sending emails to to vote for a specific budget, then everyone should be pretty to that list, and there was a lot of discussion that that's a private list by individuals, and it would be difficult to have every single list gate public, either way.
Yeah, so, on that provision, the, the language that was drafted with the question, I think it was the Charter Commission drafted, section A and B, I have no problem with. Section C, if you do choose to move this forward, I would recommend that you don't move section C forward just because this would be governed by other provisions of state law, Access to Public Records Act, and wouldn't be appropriate to.
Now, if I remember this, and Sally just showed up, this was a school committee proposal in front of the Charter Commission to begin with.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you probably missed this. We're talking about question 14, as shall the dividend town charter be amended to clarify that town officials and employees are permitted to engage in activities? This was your question? Except for the end part of it. Okay, so where are you suggesting we cut off?
I would say keep paragraph A, keep paragraph B, and cut off paragraph C. I don't know if you have it drafted.
I don't really have it as.
You can dig it out, it's in my bag.
Yeah, somewhere, yeah.
And right here.
So, paragraph A and B you like, and C, cut off.
I would recommend.
You need it under the data or whatever.
So, and C is, in the event any list of data or other information is compiled to use by any government body, department, official, or employee concerning a voting contest or for advocacy for political activity, such lists, data, or information must be made publicly available for inspection and similar fair use by the public. So, do I have a motion to accept if, and the school committee really wanted, did advocate this one, do I have a motion to accept question four, excluding C?
14.
14, I'm sorry, excluding C.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Do you second?
A second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I was going to say, I really like this one, but if, if, if we can only have 10 questions...
I think this, I think this is a priority, because we've run into a lot of charter complaints concerning this, and, um, the original language, there was a lot of questions about it, and this is, I, I think this is like one of the priority, in my opinion.
Okay, fair enough.
And Joan shaking her head, because she knows that we've had a lot of problems with this.
Okay.
All right, so, um, motion remained in second, all those in favor? Against?
Yeah, I guess I'll vote against, so we get something on there.
Okay, so, we have one, two, and three, Peter, okay? Done, at least.
Question 12, question 13, and question 14 have been moved forward.
So, you already can stop language for that, no, no, rest of them. All right, um, question 15, this is when the town council doesn't listen to the cottage of, the charter complaints, but it goes forward to the municipal court. Um, Councilor Shabbat motion to move forward with solicitor and town clerk review.
So, actually, in your packets, I included some, uh, language, and, uh, I agree, there was, there was some work that needed to be done on that, um, the way I amended it was to bring it in line with, um, other town ordinance violations, or misdemeanor violations, where the initial review for a complaint would go to the solicitor's office to determine if there's probable cause, if we determine there's probable cause, we'll bring the complaint to municipal court, if we don't, we'll issue a memo to the initial complaintant, saying there was no probable cause for a violation, it would actually take it out of the political process, so that no political body would be reviewing it, be a provision saying, you know, there wouldn't be any political interference by any employees of the town, or any members of the town, we'd basically just do our independent review and make a decision that way. We also altered the penalty provision to comply with the enabling statute for municipal court, so that the only penalty would be a $500 fine, we took out the part about removal from office, because jurisdiction for that is in the Supreme Court for an issue of quorum or reno, if you're testing, uh, the ability to hold an office, so, in certain respects, we limited the penalty, but we, uh, took it out of the, uh, process where it goes for the clerk to make a decision, and the council to make a decision.
Which makes it so less political, it is dumb. Does anyone have any opinion about that?
No, I like it.
I like it too.
Yep.
Randy or John, are you okay?
I, I opposed it last time, so, but the new language is better than...
Yep, that's good.
All right, so, any motion for this one to move forward?
I'll make a motion to move, uh, question, question 15, uh, using the language provided by the town solicitor.
Second.
Motion being second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Again? Oh, okay, so, and you already have a lot of the language written for that, all right, we're moving. Um, okay, so, 15 we did, um, 16, and that's when you changed the membership. Um, I particularly don't know if this is one of my priorities, I don't think it's, um, that much a priority for me, I don't think move, and we talked about the 11 members, and the planning board of nine, and, um, and quarums, I, I, I'm happy with the way it is, but I don't know how the rest of you feel.
Well, I kind of like the, um, replacing the treasurer with the docket secretary on the budget committee, and certainly if the budget committee was the one that recommended going from 11 to nine...
I don't know if they did though, did they?
They would stop.
It was Cecil, it wasn't the entire budget committee, right, it was just Cecil?
It was the planning.
Uh, we got a formal recommendation, uh, from the body as to the planning board, but, um, the, at the time, the budget committee was not in session, and so I think it's most accurate to say it came from, from Mr. Leonard.
Okay.
Are we sure about, I'm not actually sure about that, I don't want to be on the record, I know the planning board came in, like, full-blown, the form, as a body, the vote, the whole thing, I'm not sure about the budget committee, I'm not quite sure, but I do know this much, that the budget committee was never in session, so when Mr. Leonard did give us feedback, he wasn't purporting to represent the entire body.
Now, Peter, what was, you had some hesitation with this, right?
Uh, the, the, the only thing I would point out is that the planning board has to vote with a majority of its total membership, so, you know, if, if they have trouble making a quorum of nine, that they need to vote five, whether they can only get five people there, if you change it to seven, they'd have to vote four to, to approve a, a project, so, that's the only point I'd make, but it's up to the...
And this, of course, is, is it going to come into effect for at least a whole year?
There was a transition period identified.
I think we figured out almost three years' transition.
No, 20.
Wow.
20, 20.
Four. I think it takes two cycles for the budget, I think, to get it, it might vary on resignations and...
Yeah, and planning is appointed, so we have to look at the terms that those people were appointed.
May I ask a question? On the, um, I, I just want to get the budget committee in the, in the charter, so, they are supposed to have a chair, a vice chair, a secretary, a treasurer, and other such offices that would be inappropriate, so, I do agree with Joan about the docket secretary, but it sounds to me like they could just do that, I mean, maybe, ability, they could call their secretary a docket secretary if they wanted to, or make that title.
Right, I think it was replacing the treasurer with a docket secretary, what they needed treasurer for.
Right, but they could, they don't really need one, so...
Right, so it was, it, so to me, it's more of a housekeeping...
So, it's basically eliminating treasurer.
Right.
Right.
So, you could consider it a housekeeping, um, I, I just feel that if we move forward with the 11 to nine on the budget, then we go to public hearing, we can hear from the budget committee, and get their feedback on it.
And we can hear from the planning board also.
And we can get, hear from the planning board, if, if they're the ones that are putting this forward, then I'd rather hear from them in a public hearing and, and move this forward.
All right, so is that a motion, Joan?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay.
Move this one forward to Peter to write up the language.
So, a motion being second, any further discussion?
And that, that include, just, that does not include the administrative officer piece at the end, to clarify rules, that's state law.
So, it would stop at nine to seven, period?
Yes.
Okay.
Just because, um, I'm, just because this one isn't one of my priorities, um, but...
But I see what Joan's saying, I mean, we really don't have feedback at all from the committees right now, and they might have valid reasons, no, we'll move this to public, and we, we, we may decide not to put it on if they come to us and say, it really isn't that much of a priority for us.
Fair enough.
So, motion's been made in second, all those in favor?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, it might be just the docket, docket secretary change, and that could go into housekeeping, so...
Okay. All right, question 17, and this has to do with the recall petition, um, this was to, to move forward and request the ISC provides draft of other communities, I'm sure you haven't done that, Rob, right?
I'm sorry?
Question 17, motion was to move forward and request the ISC provides draft...
No, actually, Mr., I don't want to put Mr. Clark on the spot, but he, uh, he did yeoman's work on doing the, the type of town survey, I thought that result was forwarded to Mrs. Mallow.
Give it to the council.
So, it should be in there somewhere.
I'm going to look, it's gotten so much that I apologize.
And that, I, I, I think, and Steve can jump in here if I get this wrong, but I think the thrust of the research really had to do with the signatures and the thresholds for, for petition, but I would just also remind that there's other features of this proposal, one of which is not calling, you know, for recalls right after an election, not calling for recalls just before an election, and also putting some kind of a time period on how long these things can stay alive, so, I, I do think these are close enough related that they could be one Charter of View question, but I think, and as, as you consider them, you might want to consider that they have four different features.
Donna, I don't see, I don't doubt you didn't give it to Nancy, but I don't remember reading it, did anyone see that?
I didn't, I don't recall seeing it.
She did send it out, but the attachments weren't open.
Oh, maybe that's why, okay.
Well, do you think she would have told me, she didn't tell me, you know?
Yeah, well, you know what?
Do you have a paper copy, by any chance?
To her defense, it's been kind of crazy, and she's trying to go to Europe in two weeks, so...
This was number 17.
So, can I ask a question, because obviously I wasn't here for this initial discussion?
Yeah.
This would make it easier to conduct a recall election, or it would make it harder?
Make copies?
I, I...
We have, I'm sorry, do you want to talk to this now, or are we...
Yeah, 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 so we can look at it. Do you want me to do it, Rob, or Jenny can do it?
I think it would make it harder.
What?
Oh, John, is that...
Would make it harder, wouldn't it?
It would make it harder.
When I read it, it looks like it would make it harder to recall, so, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I, I'm confused about it, so...
No, it requires a ma, a maximum of 500, so, if the voter turnout is especially large, you're never going to go over 500 signatures, I don't necessarily know.
Some of this was Nancy's suggestions, the, the, right, to require, um, the part about not to keep them laying around.
She's got them laying around.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, um, there's no cutoff, there's no...
So, I, I think it's valid that there should be some work done in this area, and they've, they've done that, and I think, um, it does have value.
Do you want to move that forward and see for, just keep in mind, we can move more for the public hearing, and then after the public hearing, decide to get rid of some, so, um, all right, so, do you have that, are they doing that now, or?
I have more to say.
So, do you want to move this forward, and we'll look at the research they've done, and go from there, does that sound all right to everyone? All right, and then we can bring up that research during the public hearing too, if we want.
Yep.
Okay, so, do I have a motion for that?
Motion, uh, question 17, to move that forward to, uh, the public hearing.
Motion, do I have a second? Motion being second, all those in favor? Um, question 19...
Oppose.
I oppose, that's very strong.
It's all right, and that's just because I haven't seen anything, like, the research or anything, I'm not going to, I don't feel comfortable voting on something to move it forward anywhere without seeing what was requested beforehand.
No, right.
Well, but we have the section 1209 recall, it, it's pretty straightforward, but I'd just like to see the research.
That's, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so, 19 was, I'm sorry.
Which one am I choosing?
I'm sorry.
That was 17, Rob, that we just voted to move...
Oh, on the research question, oh, I thought you were on 19.
And then we'll look at your research, yeah, we're going to go to 19 in a minute.
What about 18?
18 we said no to.
Okay, so why is it on? This is just a running collection.
This is just, this is just Nancy wanted us to see what was going on. Number 19 was the one that the, um, the fire chief suggested to move forward, and we asked Jan to write a summary on this, it's in your packet. Um, I don't know if anybody has a summary.
My only question then is if we're limited, I, it, I'm not sure if it makes the top list for me, but I think it's good, I just...
What do the rest of you feel?
We got to five a long time ago, so, that's my thought.
Well, we're at five.
That's why we're at six now.
Right, but, like, we can bring...
I understand, yeah.
We can bring 10, and, or 15, we can even bring 15 and cut it down, I mean, what does everyone feel about this one? I mean, it's not a real big priority, because they're doing what they need to do now, but I agree with Donna, wouldn't be my top one, but...
Yeah, this is not one of my top ones either.
No.
Thank you, Don.
I'll make a motion to exclude this one. Yeah, do we have a second?
Second.
Not to put, not to consider, I said exclude, but...
You know, this was one of your...
It wasn't one of, well, it was chief thought that we move forward, all right, but that doesn't mean it was one of our, it's just like the rest of you guys, it doesn't mean it's one of the, my, our priorities, it's one that was suggested that we move forward to you guys. Uh, any further discussion? Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor? Against?
I like the chief.
Yeah, but, I mean, he does this anyway, he's allowed to, so...
Well, I think there's, the NIMS, the NIMS process basically says it's, it's the, um, fire chief, and that if he's not available, it has a succession plan, so, and we do have an emergency, um, management plan that was just updated, so I think we're covered with that.
Now, question 21, this is another housekeeping one, can we just do this without...
You could, you could, um, you know, lump, if there's no substantive, if it's not a substantive change, and you feel like it's important to, just for readability, or for grammar, or that's something like that, you could lump those into one that the question would just be, shall housekeeping changes be made to the organization of the charter that will have no substantive effect, so...
I think 21 is housekeeping.
As long as it's not substantive, you could, you could lump it like that.
So, we could put a whole bunch of housekeeping...
So, we could move this forward as a housekeeping item, and then, so, we've done that, we've talked about that.
I make a, I make a motion to move, oh, you want to do 22 with the same?
It was, that's what I'm looking at.
Okay, um, I make a motion to move question 21 as a housekeeping item, to be bundled with other housekeeping items.
Motion being made in second, any further discussion, all those in favor?
And I think it, it wasn't moving it to Article 8, it was moving it to Article 9, Department and Agencies.
Okay, thank you. Question 22, um, it's to delete the word, it's trying to not, all the sentence, should not be replaced nor amended for a period of at least two years.
I make a motion to move question 22 as a household item?
I have a question on that.
Housekeeping item.
Maybe a household item too. Go ahead.
Well, I don't know if you want a second on Joan's motion first?
Anyone want a second?
Second.
Okay.
So...
But is it now, is that what you're going to have?
Well, the, no, the question, I understand that this was placed in there for the initial creation of the charter, but would this not also apply to any changes to the charter sections that are made by referendum?
No, the adoption process is a different process that allows a petition, uh, and then the election of your initial Charter of Commission to put together a charter, the amendment process is distinct from the, uh, first adoption process, and once you have a charter, you can't repeal or re-adopt, you can only amend, so, uh...
So, they're saying that...
But this isn't going to impact what amendments, like, so, for instance, let's say, hypothetically speaking, right, we did something like eliminated the planning board, right? And that passed.
Yep.
There is a period where we actually can't go back in and change that section after it's passed for a certain number of years, is that not correct?
No, you can, you can go back and change it right away.
Immediately?
This would only, this would only prevent a change from two years after the initial charter was adopted.
Oh, so this has nothing to do with charter?
Right, the first charter, so really, this has no substantive change, because it's not applicable anymore.
So, could this go into housekeeping?
You could put it in housekeeping.
That's the motion was.
That's what the motion was, well, household, this is...
Household, housekeeping, it's now housekeeping.
So, I have a motion in this second, any further discussion, all those in favor? 23, now, uh, this was a Nancy, am I right, guys?
Yeah, it was a...
Should the town charter be amended to provide health benefits for the elected full-time town treasurer and town clerk if approved at the financial town referendum, as mentioned? Now, this is currently happening, this is almost like a housekeeping thing, right?
No.
No, it only says town clerk actually, um, Nancy.
But the treasurer doesn't, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment on this one?
Go right ahead.
Where it says, "If approved at a financial town referendum." If it's going in the charter, we have to approve at the financial town referendum.
No.
So why wouldn't we strike that?
And that's something for charter, it's not something that can be voted against by the people.
We, I mean, we can't have a situation where we-
Yeah, but if you vote against it, it's still gonna happen.
We gotta pay, we gotta pay for it somehow, you know, I mean.
No, I, I, I just- Because it's been retro and everything, what do you vote?
Well. If, I, I think, I think you're right, if you have it in the charter that you're required, uh, to provide health benefits to the treasurer, then you have to provide health benefits to treasurer, and even if the FDR was to vote specifically, say, do not provide health benefits, and the charter said you do, the charter would crumble.
Right.
So. So we just strike the FDR piece and call it a day?
You could do that.
So do we have to put this on here?
Do you have to put the question?
Would this be, could we pass this as a, no.
Yeah, because we add, it would add health benefits.
What do you all think?
I think we should move it forward to make sure that sometime along the way that somebody doesn't get not paid for doing their job.
I have, um, I have one more question. There isn't anything in state law that precludes, precludes us from putting financial issues into the charter, right?
No.
Somewhere on Article 13 or?
Well, there is, um, I, there is a provision that, um, when you're adopting a charter, you need to, and you, originally the towns all had financial town meetings, you'd have to go to the financial town meeting for the financial provisions of that, uh, because there used to be a distinction between the taxpayers that could vote on the taxes that were levied and the, and the other non-taxpaying voters that could vote on everything else. That distinction is gone, so the rem- the remnant of that is in Article 13, but you could, you can put this on the charter. Short answer.
Be positive?
Yes.
Okay.
It's most positive. Um, did you want to say something?
No, you can ask him.
What?
No, I can't think of you.
Well, alright, okay. Alright, guys, um, so we left it for question 24.
So are we moving this one forward, we didn't vote on it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a proposal, or motion, yeah.
I mean, I'll make a motion to move question 23 forward, make sure the treasurer gets paid.
Gets health benefits.
Health benefits.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion remain second.
Madam President, discussion?
Yep, I'm gonna call for that.
Thank you. Um, Councilor LeBeau, would you be open to amending to strike out the part, "If approved at a financial town referendum"?
I would, but the attorney just said it didn't matter because if it's in the charter, it trumps.
No, uh, yeah, but I think for clarity's sake.
Want to get it out, yep, okay, I'll, um, remove.
Making a motion to approve the amendment?
Well, if, if he's amending his own proposal, I think we could just vote on it, subject to that.
We're gonna remove, um, financial town referendum.
Yeah, if approved.
If approved.
The whole if approved thing. Do I have a second to his, um?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion, motion remain second, all those in favor? Alright, so I kind of give homework, um, what is your pleasure, do you want to just go through it? 24 on right now? Well, I'll just do it, question 24, anybody have? So, "The town charter be amended to ensure the budget approved by the voters at the town financial referendum will be a backseat of budget for the town for the upcoming year as recommended by the-" So what you're saying is you don't want us to change line item since we go along?
Am I good?
I'll be real frank, is that what you're saying?
No, actually, um, believe it or not, we view this as almost a housekeeping item because this is essentially replicating what has, I believe, always been the Budget Committee's first, um, first resolution on the budget, on the ballot, so I actually didn't view this as any kind of a major, uh, change to the current, current process.
He did this, does this prohibit the town council from moving items when we have to?
So the, the issue I have with this one is that the way it's phrased is that it could mean different things to different people, um, and, you know, the, the most innocuous, well, the, I guess, the most innocuous meaning would be simply that the budget that's voted on the FDR becomes a budget, but that almost is, that doesn't need to be said because it's implied in the FDR process. The other way it could be interpreted is that, as restricting the council from, from making line item changes. Now that would be inconsistent with Article 4 of the charter, which allows you to do that. So, I, I think it, it raises a little bit of ambiguity about what that sentence means, and I take Mr. Coulter at his word, that's not what is intended, but you never know what someone in the future-
Could be interpreted by several people differently.
This town has a habit for lawsuits, so I'm personally not interested in question number 24.
So is that a motion to delete question, to not consider question?
So moved.
Do I have a second to that? I will have discussion, anyone? Alright, so I have a motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Question 25, "Shall the dividend town charter be amended to require the budget committee include in its document a column which includes for each line item the percent difference from the preceding year as recommended by the charter?"
Madam President?
Yes.
Not interested in this one either. I'd like to make a motion to disregard 25.
Do I have a second, there will be discussion? Um, discussion, Rob, do you want to say anything about this one?
Well, it seems like some of you already made up your minds, but I, again, the idea here was not intended to change anything dramatically, I think it again follows resolutions that are happening every year. So whatever concerns that you have about ambiguities, they exist presently, I'm not suj- they, they didn't hit our top 20, so I'm not taking offense to this, I'm just saying that, that, you know.
But we don't include the percentage, do we, in the document?
The percentage, but on the, on the revenues, um, the revenues, and there was, um, you know, some discussion about adding more transparency and more, you know, more accountability on, um, petitioners and, and choices, so this makes it a little bit more clear. But I'm just telling you where we're coming from, and it, it didn't hit our top 20. But I don't think it's intended to make any change, you know, major change to the process, it just adds a little more transparency.
Any other questions or discussion from the council?
Don, I think I might have missed something, if you don't mind if.
I, I think that it's, again, it's not a priority. It wasn't a priority, it's not a bad idea, it's just not given to be a, limited base in the ballot.
Quite frankly, it doesn't be, it doesn't have to be in the charter for the Budget Committee to adopt that and decide to do that. I mean, it doesn't necessarily, right, they, they could just decide the next process that they want to do that, and that, that would be no problem at all.
Well, it's, it's, after looking at many town budgets, I noticed that it's in many town budgets that they have what the, what the percentage change is, it just seems to be, uh, an accepted practice that we're not doing.
I, I don't disagree, and I would even add-
I just was like, how come we're not doing it, and then that's why I put the proposal in.
I would even add that the format in which our budget typically goes out is basically unreadable to somebody who doesn't have a financial background. And I'd like to see that something like that addressed as well, but then again, that is something that the Budget Committee would have to do. I mean, it's something they would take up on their own as, as a committee, you know? I mean, you guys certainly as a committee or a commission put together numerous, you know, bylaws and, and practices and procedures, and, I mean, that's something that you did voluntarily. So I don't see why the Budget Committee, if members are elected to the Budget Committee, would not want to voluntarily try to improve the process. So, I don't necessarily know that some, think that something like this needs to be in the charter, I just think the Budget Committee should do it.
Well, it may be suggested to-
Well, then it would have to be somewhere, wouldn't it, because one year you wouldn't have it, and one year you would, and then one year you wouldn't have it, and then maybe two years you wouldn't have it, I mean.
Well, it's, it's whatever the elected Budget Committee decides to do, I think. Uh, I don't know if it necessarily has to be put in here, uh, because it, because it could definitely, I mean, it could definitely be suggested to the Budget Committee at, when they reconvene in January and say that this was a suggestion for the Charter Commission, would you be willing to do that? And as the 11 or 9, maybe, no, it'll be 11, will decide what, if they want to do that, and I don't think anyone would have any objections to that.
Well, I, I also think it's probably a, a matter of skill sets, too, if they're, you know, excel experts, then they probably could include it, whereas if they're not as, as, uh, as skilled in that software, they may not be able to do it as quickly, so. But I think it would be left up to them.
Thank you, Donna, and Rob. Um, so motions remain second to, um, not move this forward, any further discussion, all those in favor? 26, "Shall the dividend town charter be amended to permit delegation by the town clerk subject to retention of ultimate supervisory responsibilities, and to permit a deputy town clerk and make other word changes as recommended by the charter?" I don't get this one at all. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have questions on this one.
Yeah, it just might be me.
Right, so this, this, um, this, believe it or not, we spent a, a fair amount of time on this. Originally, the request came from the town clerk to make sure that when it involved, um, police-type prosecutions, that, um, tho- those activities could be delegated or, or, delegate is my word, I think she preferred them to be wholesale removed, uh, to the police department. Those on the commission, including me, personally felt very strongly that, uh, for separation of powers reasons, it was, we, we wanted to support that delegation, but we wanted the ultimate accountability to be within the, um, within the clerk. And we had a lot of discussion about elected versus non-elected, uh, clerks, and the commission really felt strongly about the clerk should be elected. And so there's a lot of words here, but really what this does is it permits the, um, the clerk to delegate almost anything that she wants that doesn't violate law, but at the end of the day, she retains that ultimate responsibility. If she wants to bring it back in, she can. Uh, there, one other little item here is this concept of a deputy town clerk. Uh, I haven't personally done the legal research on this, but my understanding is that, that position has, has not been filled, and so it's called for, for, in the charter, and I don't think, I'm not aware of it being required, maybe it is. So there's a cleanup item there.
Because we don't have a deputy.
No, we don't.
Nancy has someone that is kind of-
So we say she may, uh, appoint someone to deputy town clerk with capital D, but she doesn't have to, um, consistent with what we think are pretty strong inherent authority as an independently elected official. But this allows us to meet the request of, um, delegating some of those duties to help workflow and efficiency, but at the end of the day, holds a little bit of accountability to an independently elected officer.
Madam President, um, I think that, uh, with specifying that she may delegate it, but still has supervisory control over it, that she could already do that underneath the, under the current charter. If you were to remove it entirely from her responsibility, it would require a charter change, but if-
But that's not what this says.
If it's not gonna do that, then I think that the current charter prohibits that.
Any questions from the council?
Uh, Madam President, I just have one, so, uh, Mr. Coulter, so the clerk basically came to you and said, "Hey, here are these things that should be removed from my job description, and they should be placed over here under the police side," and you thought that the best idea was to make her retain the authority for it, but allow her to delegate those to somebody else. I'm just a little confused, if the clerk says that she shouldn't be doing these things, and it's in the charter that she has to do these things, why wouldn't we just move them to another location?
Well, I don't know what the original language is either, I'm sure it's somewhere.
Again, we're paraphrasing, paraphrasing here, so.
Yeah, if I understand the, the question, um, and my memory is only about 80% confident on this, but I think the request was to remove it entirely, and-
This is what she wanted.
No. Removal of wording, uh, assigning the municipal court clerk to the town clerk, she doesn't, yeah, so, so it wholesale remove her role, just like the, the elected town clerk happens to also be the clerk of the town council. Uh, under the current language of the charter, she's clerk of the probate court, clerk of the board.
There's a reason why, because we moved all this to the police department, so, but that, the question-
Yeah, now I get it.
But the question that I have is that if that was what was requested, and there was a specific reason why, because things have been moved to the police department, why are you?
They've already done that.
Well, why, I mean, why not just propose that?
Because, again, the commission felt strongly that there be some ultimate supervisory responsibility with an independently elected person.
It would be the police chief, really.
Yeah. Right, who's not independently elected, so.
Appointed by independently elected people on the town council. But that's, that's what, that's what it is.
Right, but I don't, I don't think it's fair to, I don't think it's fair to ask the town clerk who sits here in this office to have supervisory responsibility for legal clerk documents that are happening up at the police station, when-
It doesn't happen with this information.
It's, I mean, I think that that's not really, um, you know, it would be one thing if the police clerk worked in Nancy's office and, like, but that, that seems like a pretty unfair request for Nancy to have to supervise somebody in something that-
We, we agree on the, on the police piece, but, but, uh, we view the role of municipal court as being broader than just, just police matters, so there are other types of matters brought before the municipal court. So to wholesale remove her current role as the clerk of the municipal court, we thought is a bit of a, a bit of a, you know, bit of a drastic change, so.
But isn't that what we've done?
This meets the need.
We've already done that at the council.
I, I actually, I share the view that it's already, uh, delegable, I agree with this listener on this. But that's why it's maybe number 27 on the list, but, uh, but we, you know, we, we try to meet the request where we could, and, um-
Since the municipal court is state legislation, enabling legislation, is there anything in there that it says that the town clerk is the clerk of the municipal court?
Uh, no, it doesn't, it doesn't say that, um, what it says is that, I believe it says that, hold on. No, it doesn't mention the clerk in this ordinance. It, it doesn't mention, uh, who will be the clerk in the, in the enabling legislation, so. Really, it's just a matter of who the town can get to do the clerical duties of accepting complaints, tracking them, giving them the day in court, you know, tracking, making sure the, um, notices go out, that sort of thing. So that there's no-
Which the duties have already been transferred right now to the police department, and the clerk's got the police department. And it's working, I think, wow, I mean, we haven't heard any complaints. Nancy's talking with it, and I know that. I don't know, what do you guys think? Right, so is this a housekeeping thing?
Or no?
Well, not as written.
That is.
I mean, as written, this is not a housekeeping thing, it's, I mean, it feels like, like there was a housekeeping item that was requested to move this item, and then it was basically turned around and thrown right back in.
Um, I, I, I think, um, removing the language probably wouldn't have that much of a substantive effect just because the day-to-day supervision would be with the police department if the clerk is working in the police department.
Yeah, this had to be, this was willing to rearrange to other clerks and try to be financially, trying to save money, actually. Um, and it worked out that way.
So is there a position called the clerk of the mu- who's missing a municipal court?
Just under the charter, I, I, but I think the way it's working now is that the police clerk is doing it. Nancy has in name that position, although she's delegated it to the people that are actually doing it. And, you know, this would basically just remove the title of what she's no longer, no longer doing, so.
Seemed a little messy.
Yeah. Uh, either way, uh, whether you move this forward or not, um, the clerk will still, will still continue to be in the police department, whether it's voted on or not, and, uh.
I mean, I'd be okay with doing it as a housekeeping thing and just removing the words clerk of the municipal court from the town clerk's description, only because in fairness, the, the police clerk doesn't report to Nancy. It's not, I mean, that's not somebody she technically has supervisory authority over, so I don't necessarily think it's fair to hold her responsible if we're gonna go with the model that we have for somebody that she really has no supervisory authority over.
So, Madam President, how do we modify this to achieve what it is that we all want to do?
Why do we need to?
Well, you know, I think if, if you wanted to, uh, take, um, Councilor Hilton's, um, suggestion, it would just be a simple matter of striking through the words, and shall service clerk of the municipal court, so you could, um-
Housekeeping it?
It wouldn't really have a substantive effect, so I think you could put it on a housekeeping if you wanted to. If you didn't do it, it would, it wouldn't change anything, so.
No, if we don't, go ahead.
But if you remove it from the town clerk, where do you move it to? If you remove it under her, then where do you move it to?
Would that have to be in the town?
Somebody has to be responsible for the municipal court documents, so.
The, uh, as far as controlling day-to-day who supervises the clerk of a court- The, as far as controlling day-to-day, who supervises the clerk of a court is usually the judge. Usually, the judges of the municipal court clerk will say, you know, here's how I like things organized. But if you didn't have it in there, you could just pass an ordinance and assign it to whoever you wanted to by ordinance.
Because we don't have in there that there has to be a clerk of the municipal court.
So there's nothing in, in the legislation that says the documents will be stored? Nothing?
Doesn't address it. Other statutes have addressed it, and it will say, you know, will, shall be appointed by the town council or whoever, usually town council, but this statute doesn't address it, doesn't have anything about the clerk, so...
Do you think I have a motion and not a motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we strike 26. There's just way too much complication here, and the attorney seems to be on the same page.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion to remain in second. All those in favor? Against?
I think we can, we can actually address that item somewhere else in the housekeeping.
Absolutely. Because somebody's got to be responsible somewhere.
Absolutely. All right, question 27. Shall the Tiverton Town Charter be amended to prohibit the town from utilization of town services for collection or distribution of union dues or fees as recommended by the Charter Review Commission?
Mr. Vice President?
Yep.
I have an issue with this one. There is a state statute, 2814-3, that requires an employer to deduct union fees when requested to by employee from, from paychecks, so that would be, you have to deduct when they ask. And then the other thing that I'd worry about is an unfair labor practice under 28713. You don't want to do anything that would be construed as...
So, out of curiosity, Peter, while we're on this subject, are there any others that we could lump together and get rid of all at once?
So, if, my opinion, question 28, that seems to, and, you know, if I'm wrong about it, I was going to wait and see if they want to give clarification, but it seems to allow the Charter Commission to directly submit questions to the electors. That would be against the state constitution on the amendment process, which is the legislative body of the town, which is the council, submits charter question, charter, proposed charter amendments to the electors. So I had that issue with number 28. Question 29. Actually, I'll wait till I, for clarification on that one. I just had a couple of questions.
Okay. Well, in the interim, while we're on...
Yeah.
27 and 28, is there any motions or any questions regarding these items?
I'll make a motion that we scratch 27 and 28.
Do I have a second? Second, by Counselor Perry. Any further discussion? All of us in favor? All right, Kerry's 5-0. Question 29. Shall the Tiverton Town Charter be amended to clarify the role of the town clerk in the electric petition filing process as recommended by the Tiverton Town Review Commission? Mr. Solicitor, do you have any questions for the commission on this one, or do we have questions from the board?
So I just have a question because I didn't get the language, but I saw the statement, reason for the change. Town clerk could fill out the electric petition incorrectly and influence the process, and effective change, the electric petition will be the one responsible for running out the petition, and the process will not risk being influenced by the town clerk. So I didn't see the specific language, which I, why I had questions of it, but I think if you have certain requirements, you know, it's probably better to make sure the clerk looks at it not for substantive changes, but just to make sure all the boxes are checked off. Now, maybe I'm misconstruing that because I didn't see the language, but that would be my concern.
Counselor Shaver, I know you had a, you had a question. Oh, sorry. Counselor Hilton?
So, this is an FTR one, so, but just a little bit on the research that I've done. In a great many communities, the clerk actually does have to type up the petition as given to them by the petitioner, does actually have to type it up, and then it cannot be modified whatsoever once the clerk has typed it up. So that protects anybody from claiming that their petition is going to do this and then going out and collecting signatures for something else. I don't know that there's an instance where, where the town clerk, in the time that we've had the FTR, has typed up a petition incorrectly, and I do think that if you're an elector and you have a petition typed up, you have the opportunity to look at it, read it, and if there's a mistake, say, no, there's a mistake here, you need to retype this. But I think that there's far more risk in having a, you know, petitioners type up petitions and not having the command and control of what people are signing for. But again, I would put this one into the FTR conversation, just if we wanted to.
Just a quick question. This did come, this was a request specifically from Nancy Mello, and just to make clear, our charter actually is pretty clear, we think, that, that just as Patricia just said, that the town clerk takes what the petitioner gives them, types it up, and has them review that it is in fact what they are, have done. So that is what our charter says. Nancy Mello has said, as I understand it, she has felt many times that she is put in the position of, they ask her questions about how to fill it out, and that's the role she does not want to be in. Her's, her role is strictly a recording one, and that's what she wants it to be. So she just wanted it clarified in the charter that she is not expected to be the one that helps a petitioner come up with figures.
Isn't that what it kind of says, no?
Yeah.
If I could jump in, again, this is one where we attempted to react to a response or request from someone else. It is my opinion that the clerk already is under no obligation, and that, and this is very narrow. It's simply making clear that she's under no obligation. It's not saying that, that electors can somehow shift that burden. In fact, quite the opposite, we're trying to make sure that we don't, similar to the charter complaints, we're trying, the clerk does not want to be in the, in the, in the spot of trying to referee these really highly controversial things. And this request, at least in part, related to a school committee request as well, so it's not the top 20, it's not the top 10. I actually happen to agree that, I actually don't think she's currently under an obligation, but that is all we intended to do, is make it really clear that she's under no obligation to assist. So similar to the role of a clerk in a court, you know, she hands you the form, you know, make sure it's facially filled out valid, but is giving no legal advice, is giving no substantive advice, that's all we intended.
Is everyone's pleasure with this one? I don't think it's one of my priorities, but...
Madam President? Motion to strike 29.
Do I have a second? Most of the main seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Question 30. Shall the town, the town charter be amended to require the town to provide public access to all records, documents, and accounts of every office, department, agency, council, commission, board, or committee of the town, including the school department? Isn't that already what we do?
Yeah.
We have to buy loans.
So the only other thing is, similar to the concern in question 14C, you do get some documents that you shouldn't release, and you wouldn't want, so the Access Public Records Act tells you what you have to release. You get some, especially the school department, there are a lot of student records, disciplinary files, you can't release those, so you wouldn't want to have anything in the charter that would confuse that duty, so...
Madam President? A motion to strike 30.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yeah.
We need to determine what is a public record.
It's what it is, it's covered by law, isn't it?
Well, you might say, you might think it is. It depends on who waves what, and if it's actually a public record document. Is everything in front of us a public record? It's going to be in court here real shortly, and I think maybe they should take a second look to find out. We need to determine what is a public record.
The only issue with that is that if the Attorney General looks at what he considers to be a public record, he's not going to care what we put in the charter. He's just going to ignore it and look at the...
So the Attorney General, no offense, if he's listening, he's God.
Well, he's not God, but he's...
He's the Attorney General.
Which, which could be appealed to a court if we disagree.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to exclude this one. All those in favor? Against? Five boards. 30. Shall the Tiverton Town Charter be amended to clarify that non-electors can be members of certain advisory boards and commissions? Anyone have an opinion?
I'd like to see this move forward.
If you'd like to see this move forward. Trish?
I disagree. I, I feel strongly that non-electors shouldn't be named to boards and commissions.
My problem is the word "non-electors." So does that, by saying "non-electors," does it mean they have, they, they don't have to be residents?
We don't have the language, so I can't tell you that.
You know what I'm saying? That's the only thing that I have a problem with. People that aren't residents should be on our boards and commissions, is my opinion.
And if you just, the language of the question, without seeing the backup language, it would allow non-residents to be on...
And that's what my concern is. I don't see, and non-electors who live in town, I don't feel that positive for, but non-electors that don't live in town, I totally am against.
Madam President? Not that I care either way, but I think part of, and this is probably what you're going to say, is part of the reason why this came up is there are several boards and commissions that we have that do require a specialized set of expertise, like for instance, the pension board. And I know that there's some question of the composition of that board as it stands today. So I, I think we should, and that's one in particular, I think, that we should be looking at. I just, I don't know if we do it through the charter or if we do it somewhere else.
I'm sure that residents in town then may have the expertise for that.
I would hope so. And if, and if they're listening, we need some help.
But if you're not resident, I, I think when you're a resident, you have more of a vested interest in all of that.
Do you mind if I just, can I grab my mic for 60 seconds on this one? Is that okay? Oh, I'm sorry.
I think...
Oh, just a quick...
I think one of your committee members...
Sorry, yeah, yeah.
So this actually originated, believe it or not, with the cemetery commission in town, and he was, yeah, he felt, he said there, we have trouble sometimes getting people to be on the commission. He feels very strongly about the work he does in the historical cemeteries, et cetera, and he said the, the issue has come up in the past, that for instance, there's a real expert, an old family member who currently, who does live in Fall River, but he has expertise that is unbelievable about, about these cemetery zones. So that's, that was what originated the conversation about this.
But I think for some laws, I don't know, I strongly believe that if you're not a resident, you should be on the board.
So if I had just, this one, we put so much time, and what's really interesting about this one, and we'd actually, were seeking your input on this because we think that the appointment process is uniquely resonant with the town council. We actually had several proposals, and some of them were completely at odds. There was, it was, you know, we tried to, you know, find a way to make almost everything work, but some wanted absolutely never, a non-elector, non-resident, some wanted flexibility, and so what we attempted to do was craft a compromise, which maybe means nobody's happy, but you're not seeing a lot of the detail here perhaps, but the goal is if there, you post an application, okay, and an elector applies, the elector always has priority, always. And then, and only then in a situation where there are no applicant electors, then you may, but need not, but you may look outside of Tiverton and, and appoint a non-elector. If, two things. One, the non-electors always comprise a minority of the board, ensuring that Tiverton electors are always in majority control. And secondly, it has to be, and maybe this would need a little tightening, if you, it has to be a board that doesn't have sort of independent adjudicating duties, so think something like the planning board or the zoning board. Not to say that some are more important than others, but I'm just, some commissions are more advisory in nature than have, you know, clearly delegated. So that was an attempt at a compromise. Nobody was particularly happy with it, so I think you have a whole wide range of reasonable choices, but I just thought it might be helpful to explain what we tried to craft as a compromise, but we actually had proposals all over the map on this.
Does everyone agree?
I still feel strongly that... I don't disagree that, although I don't know that we need to change the charter on certain boards or commissions in certain places, something like the pension board, maybe we didn't have the resources here at, you know, the discretion of the chair, they could be, you know, they could ask for help from advisory members or non-voting members, and I'm not sure we need to change the charter to do that. But I, I think there's a lot of opportunity for people who have, you know, some folks who have very good intentions, but other people who have, who are not as, who have a little genuine, you've seen this before, want to be on boards and commissions or something that exists themselves, in place to be more community-minded. One of the things that we had sent over, although it's not on this list in terms of, you know, filling the gaps, was the opportunity to allow town employees, provided there was no conflict of interest, serve on volunteer boards and commissions. That one didn't come back. But, you know, there's one good place to start. We have a lot of employees in this town who would probably like to, and in many cases, coach, believe, do other volunteer things, but, you know, we can't serve on the historical cemetery's commission or the arts commission because they're employees, and, you know, I'd rather, I'd rather address this shortage first by giving employees the opportunity to participate before I want to consider my resume. Now, I do know that, you know, we use electors to identify as residents.
Just say that.
And, and, you know, I guess there could be a reason, even if you're not going to want to vote, why would you register? It doesn't cost anything, you know, to register a vote. With the elector, I don't know how, other than that, you would identify somebody, and I'm not sure with the residence to actually register would be...
Well, you may be a citizen of another country. And you can't vote. You can't register.
Well, I used to tell me years ago that they didn't want jury duty, that's why they didn't...
I think a more, another possibility, which I'm not passing judgment on, is one could imagine having a formal domicile in a different state for perhaps other reasons, not even outside of the US, perhaps tax reasons, but still are very vibrantly engaged in the community.
Florida, for instance.
Perhaps Florida or Tennessee or something like that, so...
They still, they have a resident.
But they might have, that you can have more than one residence, but you can only be a elector in one place, right? So I think, I think your, your policy, which I might have had a hand in drafting some years ago, still prior, is like a pecking order of priority, and, you know, we support that policy. So again, it's, it's a tough call. I also have said many times, and I don't know that I have the support of a majority on this, but you don't have to be a member of a commission to make a, or a board to make a contribution, and particularly, these are advisory, they're important, but at the end of the day, you know, there's other opportunities. So I think, I think anything you come up with is reasonable, but there's definitely a yearning that we got from more than one, I think maybe three, said we need help filling these boards, so can we make them smaller, or can we, can we, but we also got some that said, no, no, if you can't go into that clerk's office and raise your hand as an elector of Tiverton, then what makes you think you have the right to be part of the government? So I, I think Patricia makes a very valid point as well.
I don't think it would get by the people of Tiverton. I don't think it has a chance of, so...
By the electors?
Not, no, there's, there's no way. You'd better love saving the spot for something that the folks of Tiverton, and they're not going to vote to have somebody from Fall River, Westport, don't forget where we're surrounded by Massachusetts, to come in here and make a decision for us. So I think...
The other thing you maybe could do is try to, if you don't change, especially these advisory boards, which, which, we had a lot of discussion about almost wiping them all out and making them all in your discretion, other than obviously the ones that are required by law, but... But, you know, you might, I don't know if you need to do it tonight or this cycle, but
you might consider changing the size of some of these, or I think the Open Meetings Act requires a majority to be a quorum. But if you, in my opinion, if you could consider lowering the quorum requirement and see if it gets through the General Assembly, I know there's not much of an appetite to take that on. These are just things that we talked about, and it is a tough call.
Well, in my opinion, it's just, it's one that I don't think the voters of Tiverton are going to approve, so I say save your spot for something, one of the 10 or however many we're going to put on.
Madam President?
I think one thing we should consider is town employees being on boards, not being excluded from serving on a board. I think we have some good people in town, our employees, that would like to serve, and our residents would like to serve on the boards, but because they're town employees, they're not allowed to.
Right.
And certainly, you know, if it's a resident that's a non-elector, I don't see why they can't serve on a board. If they're a resident, they have a driver's license in Rhode Island.
Yeah.
You know, maybe they can't register to vote for whatever reason.
Maybe they're 17 years old.
Are they just two, not two? I don't know, what do you think? What do you want to do with this one?
I'd like to make a motion to strike 31.
Second.
Motion's been made and accepted to strike 31. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'm prepared to.
Four. Against? Any even not? Question 32. Shall the Tiverton Town Charter be amended to adjust the terms of the school committee internal offices and the locations of last school committee minutes as recommended by the town? I don't know what that means. Do you want to explain that?
Yeah, so, and before I forget, if there's time, Mr. Clark is, was hoping to revisit 17, at least, to introduce some of his work, so whenever that you think makes sense. This is responsive to a request from the, from the school commission, the committee. It really does two things. One, it removes the requirement of the school committee to file their minutes with the, with the town clerk. I don't think that's particularly controversial because the, the minutes are, have to be available, as we all know, through the, through the Open Meetings Act, and their public records as well. So, and then the other thing, it's a little bit of a nuance, but it technically, as it currently reads, requires that the school committee elect its organizational officers, or its corporate officers, if you will, annually, but the elections tend to be by annually. And so, it removes the current language in the charter that they have to conduct an election every year. This, I think, is separate then from another, but I'll just mention it, I don't know if it hit the top 40, which was to require that the school committee appoint a clerk, because that is required under state law, much like having an administrative officer is. My view on this, I think, is something that was said earlier, is that I think that they have inherent authority to appoint anybody they want and hold elections whenever they want. So, we reluctantly, well, we reluctantly approved the request to add the requirement to have a clerk. Didn't see any harm in that, but it didn't make our priority lists, especially since it was consistent with law and short to do so. But this one, you know, I don't know that it's cleanup, because somebody might really want to have an election every year if it's corporate officers, but, you know. But they can have it every day if they want, right? So, that's, that's where this comes from. And I don't know if our liaison is here.
Who suggested this, do you remember?
Mr. Larkin threw, the body voted it. It was a formal request with the whole thing, the form, the whole thing.
Do you have any?
No, I think you said it was just cleanup, but you don't do it every year. But I guess. Oh, I know, I was thinking you don't.
No.
Remember this under housekeeping?
I want a child violation because we don't do it every year. I guess that's.
If you want the minutes, it's not hard to get them.
No, I think, we're still. Could this be housekeeper?
I mean, I guess it is a substantive change, but it doesn't, they can, they can set their own internal policy, it's governed by Robert's rules, and as far as the minutes, Open Meetings Act requires that a copy needs to be with the office for the public body. So, if they already have a separate office where they file their minutes in the school department, they can do that. Charter right now tells it to give it to the town clerk, but if an app or request came to the clerk, she'd have to provide the minutes either, either way.
Right. Anybody want to? I make a motion not to move this forward.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Twenty-three, shall the Tiverton Town Charter be amended to rule of any sections where prior charter violations, complaints, and zones in, you would, or is this the, as interpreted?
Yeah, just to cut you off, this one is already addressed through other choices, so I might, I can go into it, but I think you can probably pass over this one, because, and I can go on all the other reasons, but this, this is a bit of a placeholder that's been addressed in several other spots.
Madam President? Motion to strike 33.
Question's made. Second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Question 34. Shall the Tiverton Town Charter be amended to rule of the Waste Water Commission and housing authority for treasures duties? I think the treasure route for this, right?
She did, yes. I think it was a formal treasure request.
Because she really has nothing to do with it.
Yeah, my, I don't stand myself an expert on this, but my understanding is the Waste Water Commission is now a completely independent entity. Couldn't see any reason why they needed checks and balances.
So this is just a housekeeper, where we could just delete that, right?
Yeah.
I think so.
That was from the old charter.
Yeah, these are kind of just worked over.
So, do I have a motion to move this forward as a housekeeping?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Question 35. Shall the Tiverton Town Charter be amended by to prohibit any volunteer or elected official other than the full-time treasurer and town clerk from receiving compensation?
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion to strike 35.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Madam President? One, I just, I know it came up, and I know there's been some discussion, politics and whatnot, but I'm a little disappointed because this came, you know, on the heels of a budget which was driven directly to remove any compensation from the town council, and it feels like a slap in the face. So, I just want to make sure that members of the CRC understand that I feel that way.
Yeah, Madam President, with, most of us on the council do way more with the money that we get, the little tiny bit of money we get for the town. Like, most of us give it back in some way, shape, or form to an organization or somewhere with our time, or personally, I don't, I don't take it, I donate the whole thing. So, it'd be taking it away from an organization in town. For two cents an hour, I think we should just about scratch that.
I feel motion's been made and recorded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Shall the Tiverton Town Charter be amended to require the town clerk to publish online all documents for random agreements, contracts, and exit agreement added into the town by the import?
Madam President?
I have a little bit of a problem with some of this, but some of this isn't.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that may, it's similar to what came up with question 14C and the other question that came up.
There's some of this we can't run.
And, and there's some of it that will be public, and if it's public, you can make the record requests and, and obtain a copy.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion to strike 36.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Question 37. Shall the Tiverton Town Charter be amended to require the town to add a moral clause to all of the town's labor contract?
Madam President? I have a concern with this from a, from a waiver negotiation perspective, because once you say that you have to have a clause in there, you're required to negotiate that, and that gives your, the person sitting across the table from you.
I know, we're not going to put that in there. Oh, I won't put that in there if you give us a rating.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Madam President?
Yeah, I don't like that one at all.
Motion to strike 37.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Shall the Tiverton Town Charter be amended to require the town council's school committee to make public details of any tentative labor or collective bargaining agreements? Require approval of the body at least 30 days prior to the meeting, the final approval vote is to be taken. I don't think you can do that either, right?
Yeah, I'm just trying to read, I didn't have the language with it, so.
Well, I think it's public once we vote, and they, and they amend it, and they say yes, but sometimes 30 days before, there's still things where we're working out, I mean.
Yeah, I was just looking at the timeline. I guess I was just confused on that part, but as far as the negotiation, if you were required to submit it publicly, that could fall, cause a deal to fall, fall through, and, but once it gets voted on, obviously, that will be open session, public would be able to get a copy of the document, so.
So, so where does it say we have to make it public 3 days? Isn't there someplace that says we have to?
Once we vote.
Right.
Then we make it public 3 days, and I think.
And then you have the final vote.
Yes.
Out here.
Right.
But, but once we say yes, and they take it to their membership, and they say yes, we have to publish it for 3 days before we have the final vote.
Yeah.
Because in those 3 days, people could call us or comment or come to me.
Right, but is, is.
We didn't say that.
Where does it say 3 days?
It's in the charter.
Yeah, it sets it under.
What number is it?
Section 407 Powers and Duties under Town Council, number 13 on page 9.
And it says that we have to give it to you 3 days.
Right.
But that's, that's after we say tentatively, yes, we agree with this, they take it to the, the union, they vote on it, they go back and say, "We agree with that," and then we come in front of them.
And that would just change that 3 days, 30 days, after the same tentative thing?
That's way too long.
Yeah, but this doesn't, 3 days, it's people's money. I mean, they don't get, get a chance to even look at it, it's not enough time.
Yeah, but it's, it's, we're voting on it. It's just so you guys can see it, but I don't know.
3 days to see it, I mean, why?
Yeah, but what are you going to do anyway?
Madam President, I just, I got a comment, because this, I know, I understand the genesis of this, right? So, the idea is that, you know, if we had to put it out there for 30 days, it would give time to mount public opposition to a union contract and put stuff in the paper and, you know, lambast the town council for doing a bad job negotiating, but, you know, I mean, at some point, we got to stop putting stuff forward into the charter just to be a mechanism to tear other people down. Like, we need to start searching for a way to have a more perfect form of government, so, I don't know. With that, I'm going to motion to strike 38.
Let's just remember, this is another one of these that I, I know you guys just love being up on the CRC. This is already in the charter. If you want to take it out of the charter, take it out of the charter. But the spirit of the thing is that it's not, and Peter can sound if I'm wrong, but you don't have to follow the same vote out in public that you did inside. The whole idea is that you take public opportunity, not to be lambasted, to be persuaded by others that may have an interest. And so, all this does is adds some time. Is 30, is 30 days too long? Maybe it is. I mean, I was on the council, and one of the things that I recall is there's a lot of work and detail that goes into preparing these fiscal impact statements in some discretion. And there's been times when there've been errors made by the town administrator in that. And so, this allows people some opportunity, maybe 30's too long, maybe 3's too short, to have a look at that and say, "Hey, wait a second, did you, did that add up to that? Did that add up to that?" That's all that this is trying to do, and it's, it's not introducing a new concept into what's already, what's already in your, in the charter.
And just to, just to be clear, Madam President, I wasn't suggesting that it would be illegal to make this change. It's just that, from a bargaining perspective, and the, right now, the minimum would say at least 3 days. You could do more if you decide it's appropriate in the circumstance of that negotiation. Sometimes things come up and you need to negotiate it quickly, and they need to take it to the union, and, you know, you want to try to get this done as quick as possible. If you put it 30 days, then you're not going to be getting a vote until 30 days, plus however long it takes to get the meeting noticed and the unions to vote. But that's not to say in an ordinary circumstance, you could say, "Well, we're going to give 15 notices on this kind of, 15 days notice because we have plenty of time," or 20 days or 30 days, or even more than 30 days, if in the circumstan, if the circumstances would allow it. And it would still allow members of the public to say, if you vote on it in 3 days, they could say, "Well, we thought you voted too quickly this time," and you could respond by saying, "Well, we voted 3 days here because we were under a time crunch for X, Y, and Z." So, I think just, it could proof cover some.
We can change the 30 to a week if you want.
What would that gain?
The 3.
What do you think?
Well, it's like Donna said, the people would have a week to look at it and be able to come and ask questions instead of 3 days. And, and it's always done before a meeting, so it's required to post anyway. Maybe that's where that came from.
Yeah, but if you, if you make a decision at one meeting, then it's usually 2 weeks before you do the final vote on it anyway.
Usually, yeah, you're right. Or, yeah, you're right.
It seems like.
But see, we don't know, they have to send it back to us and say, they have to have a vote with their union. So, sometimes we say, "Yes, we agree with this," and then they go into their union. So, that sometimes takes a little, that's within that 2 weeks.
Madam President?
It happens a lot that way. So maybe a week would be more sufficient, and then we just, because they'd have a week to go to their union and then come back to us.
Madam President, I think you hit right on the nail on the head with why it's 3 days, at least 3 days.
Yeah.
I mean, I feel like if you have a different requirement for this to be posted for a certain amount of time, you know, this could actually create an opportunity for administrative errors in the clerk's department where, you know, maybe we have a meeting coming up and it needs to be posted, and, oh, whoops, we're supposed to post it for 30 days and we only had it for 27. And then the next thing you know, we're staring down the barrel of another lawsuit. So, it just, why are we doing this?
Well, I mean, I see that as I did. With 3 days, you don't really get enough time for everybody to really look at it. I think if we changed it to a week, then at least it'd be a week, and that would be reasonable for the unions. But they usually, once we call them and say, "Yes, tentatively, we agree with it," they go right to their membership. They don't wait 2 weeks. They go right away. So.
This would, this would also impact the school committee. What's your, I'd like to hear from.
Yeah, because you guys give 3 days?
Yeah, 3 days.
I don't see, I don't understand why you need more time. You want the public to see what the contract was so they can.
Yeah, so they'll see in the 3 days.
So they can see it within the 3 days and say, "Well, we don't like this and this." And that, that could cause more, I mean, we're elected here to do this job, and a lot of you guys are running for office. You're going to see that, if you get in, you're going to see that it's, you know, you don't want, you don't want to make, open up a can of worms for, we're elected to do a job, let us do the job. 3 days is enough time. If they're interested, they're going to know long before the 3 days is up, and like Denise said, it gets, Jones said, it's 2 weeks before the next meeting anyway, and it's out there. It's everywhere.
But I think if we advertise it, that gives all the weekend, and if people want it, very seldom do we ever have anybody come and argue with, if you think of us.
Well, we, yeah.
I'd like to see everybody have a fair shot. Fair shake at it, but if they're really interested, 3 days is more than enough time. And as we all know, we've been sitting here for almost 2 years, you get the same 20 people who care. And everybody else elects us to do the job for them. And they, they trust in our opinion and what's going on. It's not just an easy negotiation.
Oh, you did? All right, so, I'm sorry, so I have a motion to strike. I've got a second, but.
No, be second, I can put it out there.
I didn't hear the motion.
Will I have further discussion?
That was after, I said my piece, but.
So you made a motion and said your piece?
And I have a second.
I said my piece, and then I said, "With that, I'm motion to strike 38."
Oh, I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. I mean, I'll, I'll motion to strike thirty-eight again.
Okay, so I have a motion. Let's have a, if we have a second, I second it. Further discussion?
So, I'm a little in between on this one. On the one hand, I do think that if people wanna weigh in, and they wanna pick up the phone and call their councilor, so three days is a short period of time, you know, for somebody to be able to see this. So, I do think that that's short. I do think thirty days is far too long. On the other hand, I have to say, of all these things, this isn't at the top of my priority list, so I'd be okay with lengthening it a little, but I have to say that at the end of the day, of if we can only put ten on the ballot, this one isn't gonna make my top ten. So, that's where I am.
But wouldn't we be giving the public a chance to speak at the hearing on this?
They can anyway.
Maybe the people, well, the public hearing, they could. You're gonna put these...
There's no public hearing requirement for...
Oh, whoa, 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 whoa.
No, on the twenty-sixth, on the twenty-sixth, you're gonna have a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
People might wanna...
Not only thirty, I don't even, thirty days...
No, but people might wanna say, well, I'd like to see ten days, or I'd like to see seven days.
But Joe, I think if, I think it's point the public weighs in, but the people who are actually negotiating, it's unrealistic for us to keep it out there for thirty days.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, to put it on for the twenty-sixth, if the people wanna speak on this and say, yeah, they think it should be five days, or, you know, instead of...
Are you referring to what I said?
Right, but I wouldn't put it out for the public hearing if you want thirty days.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, do you think that three days is enough, or do you think...
It's not, it's not, it's a minimum of three days. I mean, we could, on the next contract, we have two contracts that we're negotiating now. I mean, if the, if we decide on the police one, and we say, you know what, we're gonna try it for fifteen days, we have the latitude to do that.
I mean, quite frankly...
It's just the minimum posting requirements.
I usually get a call from the union head saying, yes, it went to, I haven't even asked the other people who could put it on the agenda, or blah, blah, blah. I mean, at that point, the president or the town administrator can make it public right then and there, like, within those two weeks, and maybe something we wanna talk about and try it out, 'cause we're gonna have one coming up very soon. And so, if we get the okay from the union, that they agree, then we could just put it out before the meeting. I mean, I don't think it's required, it's, I don't think it has to be three days, but sometimes we just don't have that latitude, get it right away. Like, sometimes it's right before the meet, right before we have to post the meeting, that we find out it's all set. So, I don't think it's right to wait another two weeks if we know it. And as long as we keep it out and post it, I think it's something we can do anyway. At a public level, we can try to do it and see what happens. And the next council will try to do it too. It's not something that has to be in the Charter. That three days just refers to advertising the way we're supposed to.
Posting requirements.
Yeah, that's all it is.
That's the minimum. So, you could, if you wanted to do more, you could do more.
Yeah, it does say at least three days.
Yeah, and that's what it says.
We just need to be cognizant of, as soon as we have the information, to get it out.
Yeah, we'll try it. It's gonna come up within the next couple of weeks, so we'll try it. Motion to strike thirty-eight. Do you wanna say something?
Yes, thank you. Yes, Councilor LeBeau, I want the town council to do their work, to do your work, and I wanna give you a lot of freedom to do your work. I also wanna see all your work, as do most citizens.
Tell you why.
Right. And, I don't, I'll need time to assimilate all the information, come up with a stance, and then bring that forward. Yes, Councilor Edwards, there may be letters to the editors to mount a position, or a, to go against your contract, and that's okay. I mean, that's good. You should, you should look at that as healthy criticism.
Richard, as someone who, and the town council has me negotiating with the police and fire, it took me more than thirty days to assimilate everything, learn every single process, talk to the firemen and find out why it's not working, why it isn't. I don't think that thirty days is gonna allow you the knowledge that this council has on this, because then I come back and I report to this council weekly, or as much as I meet with them. So, it's very difficult for the public to really understand all of it, and it's gonna take more than, it took, so far, it's taken us six months to be negotiating some of this contract, and you're not going to understand the reasoning sometimes. And I think that's what they're talking about. Some ways you can, we do present it, but unless you actually sit here, sit through executive, or do as I do, two meetings a week for the last six months, and we, you don't really, will appreciate all the work.
I appreciate your work, Madam President.
And I don't wanna, I don't wanna just say, thank you for doing this, Faris. I'm just saying that my, going through it, by looking at that contract, you're not gonna know why some of those...
It's gonna take me more than three days. You are absolutely right.
No, I'm just saying, you're not gonna understand all the reasoning for why it's there. And I just wanna say that. I don't think, it would take you months, the way that we do it, to really understand the contract. And there has to be a bit of trust. There really does.
Yes, there does have to be trust, but, well, you've made your point.
So, what we'll do, but like I did, as I suggested, it's probably, I know there's gonna be a contract from now until November, and it'll be one of the ones I'm involved in, and I'll make sure that once the union calls me and says, we're all set, I'll put it out there, and we'll see if that works.
Thank you for your time, Madam President.
And we'll see how that all works. But, thank you. And I'm not insulting you, I'm saying that it's just, it's a lot of work, and it's a lot of intricate detail in how these departments run, and there's no way thirty days you're gonna understand the entire...
I could understand more than thirty.
Okay. All right, Richard, okay.
Those are just the numbers.
Richard, you know where I stand, and you know where I am, and you know, all you need to do is come ask me, and you'll get any bit of information that I have.
Right, I mean, I...
Ask you.
You can't ask it, 'cause that's an executive session, right?
Exactly right. But anything, anything out in public, I don't hold any secrets.
All right, so, I have a motion.
Thank you.
And I have a second, and it's to strike this one. All those in favor?
I forgot what the, to get rid of, get rid of thirty.
Joe, are you with it or opposed? Opposed. Shall the Tiverton Town Charter be amended to require town officials to negotiate collective bargaining agreements in the public? You know, we can't do that.
Yeah, Madam President, I have an issue with that one. One is, if you're discussing it among the council, you wanna have that in an executive session, so you don't reveal your bargaining position to the other side, which would be a weakness.
Right.
And the other is that, if you're discussing it with unions or representatives from the union, you know, you can't control how they decide to run their governance structure. They're not a public body.
And they also probably wouldn't want to be involved, to also, because of their strategy.
Right, so, I would recommend against that one.
Madam President, motion to strike thirty-nine.
Any further discussion? Motion remains second, all those in favor?
All right, I'll be quick, I promise.
Well, Richard, this isn't even something that we should consider.
Watch how quick I'm gonna be.
This is foolish.
No, 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 it's not foolish. It's just, I don't even think it's really...
Don't attack like that. Try to understand.
All right, I'm watching the clock. You said you'd be quick. Let's go.
Mr. Solicitor, are you citing state law, or are you just citing a strategy?
Strategy.
Strategy. See how quick it was?
Okay, but it is strategy, and you just don't...
That was pretty quick, actually.
No, yeah, I'm really impressed. I was watching that minute, and it took me one minute.
Probably didn't see it ten minutes.
No. All right, so I have a motion, and it's, yeah, go ahead.
About this, and I don't know if Mr. Rahm has ever been in a negotiating session or not, but, in my opinion, if you tried to negotiate every contract in public, every single contract would end up in binding arbitration, which is the worst way that you can settle a contract, especially in the state of Rhode Island. But, in, you know, in many cases, you know, both sides are asking for things, but in the case of municipal government, there's, in many cases, more of an ask from the union. And, sometimes, they're willing to make concessions in negotiation that they know aren't gonna make their union members happy, that they're gonna have to sell to their union members, that they're gonna have to say, we tried really hard to get this, but we couldn't, even if they knew. If you try and make this all happen in public, there'll be nobody in the union that has any ability to bend, because they have to go back and answer to a large membership that actually gets to directly vote. And so, you know, never mind the strategy of this, I think you will end up with every single contract in binding arbitration, and that is just the worst possible way to settle a contract. I can't think of any other place where union contracts are negotiated in public, anywhere.
I have a motion and a second.
Just, watch how quick I'm gonna be, Madam President.
Go ahead, what?
It's gonna be quick. Have you ever seen negotiation occurred in public?
No.
I'm done.
Have you? Have you?
No.
Okay.
I'm done.
Okay. Motion's been made and second, all those in favor? And the last one, shall the Tiverton Town Charter be amended to champion the duties of hiring part-time acting temporary seasonal employees on the personnel board to the town administrator?
I say we bring that one forward.
Three different, I think this is one of ours, isn't it? Yes, I remember, yeah, well, and I think we all, well, maybe that's where I heard it discussed. The problem is with the seasonal employees, we have to do that really quick, and we just don't have time for the personnel process, so that's why we asked for this. So, Randy put a motion, do I have a second? Motion's been made and second, all those in favor? No.
Seventeen.
No.
May I yield to Steve on seventeen?
Well, yeah, and also, we did something, I wanted to, one other thing I should have mentioned. Did you all get this stuff from the tax assessment? Okay. All right, come on, Steve, while they're looking.
Hello, everybody. My name is Steve Clark, for those of you who don't know me. I'm on the Charter Review Commission, and I wanna talk about question seventeen, which is the recall process, which, I think you all agree, is a very important process in our government process. And we spent a lot of time looking at the rules currently given, and there was a lot of debate about what's appropriate, because obviously, it's a question of how high the bar needs to be in order to filter out trivial recalls. And, you know, if it's too low, you're gonna get trivial recalls that don't get through, and if it's too high, a general recall may never come flowing. So, it's really a question of, you know, where the bar needs to be to be appropriate, and we went around and around in that, and at one point, I said, well, let's look at what surrounding towns are doing. And that's what this document is, that was passed out earlier. And there's a lot of information that I tried to boil down. I looked at the surrounding towns, and you can see them listed down on the left-hand side. And I pulled out what I considered the basic elements for each recall process for each town. Now, you can go back through that and look at it in more detail, but I summarized that in Table Two, which is on page three. So, it's a much more concise summary of what I found. And you can see, down the left side, the towns are kinda limited because their living prices are so different. But what we ended up with was Belleville, Charles Town, Coventry, Lexington, Hopkinton, and Westbury. And across the top, I've listed the, each column there is what I consider the key elements of each recall process. So, you can see the first element there, there's limits to when a recall petition can be initiated. And you'll notice next to Tiverton, there's nothing there. So, that's a hole that we intend to plug. And if you look at the other towns, they tend to vary from, you see, a minimum of a hundred and eighty days, and up to twelve months. So, there's quite a range there. The next column over is number of electors required to initiate a recall petition, and that was kinda split between one, or five, and, you know, that wasn't a big issue of debate, in my own opinion. One person is fine, 'cause anybody can go out and get four more signatures to initiate a process. The real work comes when you have to get the signatures on the petition. So, the next column is the number of signatures needed on the petition, and in most cases, it's presented as a percent of voters from the last election. And if you want a little more definition of that, go back to the first page. As you can see, Tiverton is twenty-five percent, and I'm gonna go back to the first page on that one, and it says, petition must have signatures equal to twenty-five percent of the votes cast for the last election for the official named. Moving on, oh, you can see our twenty-five percent is actually a little higher than most other towns, but you have to be a little careful, a little careful about how those percentages are calculated, so... Next element though is time limit to obtain signatures. And again, we didn't have a time limit. And Nancy came in and said, we need a time limit, because I've got open recalls that I have no mechanism to close them out, so we're plugging that hole. And you can see what the time limit is for other towns. Time limits for special election, and I think we fall in line pretty well with most other towns for that. There's a minimum and a maximum that the election wants to fall within. I don't think there's a lot of debate about that. And then the last column, number of votes required. And you see, a lot of towns don't even have a requirement. We have that forty percent number with an asterisk, and you've gotta go back to the first page, 'cause that forty percent is kind of a complicated number. I'll read it to you, and then every time I read it, I have trouble wrapping my head around it. The recall is not valid unless a total of at least forty percent of the number of electors in the last election who voted for the person holding that office shall have voted on the recall question.
Yeah, it just has to do with forty percent of whom came out and voted.
Yeah.
You're right, it's real complicated. At first, I didn't understand it years ago.
Yeah, but at least if we understand that, we know that, what that number's gonna give you, and in round numbers, let's say, let's say a thousand people voted for that person, the person being recalled. Forty percent of a thousand is gonna be, what, about four hundred people? Just in round numbers. So, it gives you an idea of how we kind of arrived at the five hundred number that we're proposing. But anyway, that's the data that went into question seventeen, and with that in front of you now, I think you can, you know, make a more educated appraisal of whether our numbers make sense or not, and whether we've plugged the holes. So, that was the research that went into this, by myself and the commission. And, are there any questions?
No, thank you, Tom.
All right.
Thank you very much. It's good work.
Yeah.
Very good. What did we do with that question?
We moved it forward. I'm more than against it.
We moved it forward. But now, I, by looking at this really briefly, I see where you're coming from. Thank you. I do have to, go ahead.
In these, do they specify, I know that, I noticed that some of these said general election. Do they specify general election as in, like, the state general elections, or, do they specifically identify what classifies something as a general election?
I don't have the internet off the top of my head. I do have copies of all of these charters. I could share them with you if you'd like to dig into, or I can dig into that a little deeper, if you'd like me to get back to you on that.
It's all right. I'm just curious, only because, in any of these, that you do this in a percentage, if you look at them, so, just interesting. So, your proposal is to go with a flat number of five hundred?
Yes.
And, you know, lots of other communities like Tiverton use a percentage. But, if you think about it, if you're in Tiverton, I think in the last non-presidential general election, right, if that's considered a general election, about four thousand people vote. election, right, if that's considered a general election, about four thousand people vote. So in that election, if you go with twenty-five percent of four thousand, you need about a thousand signatures to recall something.
It's twenty-five percent. At least the way it's presented here, it's the number of votes cast for that person. So if there's four thousand.
It's not that person.
That's what it says.
I thought it said it's for the person.
Yeah.
It says it's for the person.
So if there's four thousand votes, if there's four thousand votes.
Oh, oh, all right, the signatures, yes. Okay, okay.
Is that the, well, now I'm confused. Is that the, is that the number of votes
Of signatures they need?
Is...
So, so.
The signatures.
The signature, if I can.
It's, it's.
So twenty-five percent.
The goal here is to, is to put the recall on a real, no kidding ballot. It's twenty-five percent of the number of people that voted for that incumbent, subject to a cap of five hundred. So it's not five hundred flat. It could be as, we actually talked about having a minimum, but we, that was, that was not approved. So if, if someone got four votes and somehow got a ballot, you only need one to start. Once you have the election, it's fifty-five percent, irregardless of how many people vote.
Whoever came out and voted.
So, and, and, and boy, there, there's a lot of variables here, and you can, you can push a lot of them, because we've talked about whether there should be minimums or not.
I will say this, one of the complications, one of the complicating things about that is that, and let's just pick a number. So, and, and let's say that, that you got four thousand votes, right, in a, in a non-presidential general election. Then for you to be recalled, you'd need a thousand. In a presidential election year, when many more people come out to vote, right, now you're, if you're the top vote getter, now the recall bar gets a whole lot higher.
That's why I have a cap.
Because it's a presidential.
Yeah.
Year. Um, so it is a, it is a complicated thing. So are there any other commu, I'm just looking at this, it's like, everybody uses a percentage except for Westerly. They're the only one that has gone to a flat number.
That's correct, yeah, for number of signatures.
And, and some of the signatures are for the percentage of the actual voters, and some of them are a percentage of the registered voters.
And some of, and in our case, it's the voters who voted for that person.
Correct. So the percentages are all over the place, and what they're a percentage of.
I, I kind of like the mechanism that we have with the percentages of, for signatures of who voted for that person, and then also percentage of voters who have to turn out based on who voted for that person, because in theory, it would make the recall process easier on somebody who was further down the ballot, rather than somebody who was higher up in the vote totals, which.
I don't know about that. I mean, I think.
But there's a big differential vote spread.
Yeah, but I don't.
Yeah.
But it's, it's not, okay. Well, we're going to move it forward anyway, so. Um, now, the next thing, um, Dave Robbin gave, uh, sent us some changes he would like to make. You've seen all of it.
I, I have.
And, and Jan has looked at it also. Um, Dave sent me an email. He would have liked to come and explain it today. Uh, but he did explain it a little bit, because I wasn't in here today. Uh, it's, it's almost housekeeping also. Um, so I think we should just move this forward. Dave said that he'll be more than willing to, um, be at the, um, public hearing and explain it to the public in a, in a more, um, who are we able to explain it? I'm sorry. Uh, you guys have looked at this also. Do you have any comment?
Uh, no, no, actually, all we'll do is that, um, right now, the FDR sets up the maximum motor vehicle tax, but due to people moving from town to town, he gets the final data later after the FDR process. So he wants to be able to adjust that.
And then he wants to combine the auto with the, um, with the dental levy, together as one number.
Right, so now it would just say the tax levy. It wouldn't say motor vehicle.
Right, because eventually, they're trying to eliminate the autos. So he said that he'd like to clean it up in the charter. So, um.
Madam President, I'll motion to move forward. All of Dave Robert's suggestions as housekeeping.
And Dave said that he'd be more than willing, like, once we got to the public hearing, he'll explain it all, and we, we, he wouldn't be insulted if we changed it, or whatever. Go ahead, Joe.
Well, it's just, we're going to be discussing three, eight, ten, and eleven, which is also in the, in the FTR section of the, so it could be all bundled.
Good point.
So.
And we can bundle it that night.
Yes, but I'd say.
That's how we save money on home and auto.
All right, so.
This isn't progressive.
The motion's been made, right? In second, in, all those in favor? And like I said, um, he really apologized. He had something come up, so. And he actually thought he was going to explain this on Monday. And he canceled it, so. All right, so now I'm going to, do we need another meeting?
So, uh, Madam President, I, right now, I have, uh, what I'm going to write question for, question for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, uh, questions. Uh, one of which will be the housekeeping question. Uh, nine other questions you voted to move forward either as is.
Wait, I only have six.
I have, uh, question twelve.
Yep.
Question thirteen.
Yep.
Question fourteen. Question fifteen.
Oh, wait a minute, question fourteen?
Yep. Excluding six.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I didn't remember that one. I'm really sorry. Go ahead.
Question fifteen.
Yep.
Question sixteen.
Yep.
Question seventeen.
Yep.
Question twenty-three. Question forty. And then lumping all together as a housekeeping, question twenty-one, twenty-two, and thirty-four. And then.
Wait, 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 twenty-one, twenty-two, and thirty-four is housekeeping?
Yes, that's what I had, is housekeeping.
Yeah.
Twenty-four also.
Twenty-four?
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute.
No, 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 we threw twenty-four out.
We threw twenty-four out.
Because that was the one that could potentially cause interpretation issues.
And so the only, the only open question would be if you wanted to address the FDR pro, whether you wanted to include the tax assessor's question and just move straight to the public hearing, or whether you wanted to have another meeting to address the FDR process, discuss changes you want to make to that, and add one more question that would encompass changes.
And that'll be a big meeting, because it'll just be us talking about the FTR, and we'll be organized enough to know what week.
Three, eight, ten, and eleven.
Yeah. So that's really, and, and I don't think it would be a big deal if I did not be able to attend. It's just on that one. So, I don't know.
Well.
When can you make it next week? Let's see.
Hang on one second before you say it's not going to be a big deal. I, I, it might not be a big deal, but.
Well, I'm saying it will happen.
I, I do think we did send over that question about employees being able to serve.
Well, we can add that to that meeting.
So, so could, that was one that we sent over that, um, I'd like to revisit, I think Counselor Perry would like to revisit.
No, we, we, we cut that one. That was number thirty-one. We cut.
No, that's non, that's, that non-residents. We voted to send over one that said in residence, employees who are residents of the town could volunteer to serve on a board or commission. We sent that one a long time ago.
That was the meeting. I ran the meeting.
That wasn't one of these forty bill, correct?
No, it didn't make it, it didn't come back from the society.
It didn't come back to us.
No, so, but.
Right, but we could have changed thirty-one to reflect that, but we, we, we scratched thirty-one. That was the non-electors.
And if the council chose to go that route, I could, that would be an easy enough question to draft. I think the only reason you would want to have the extra meeting for the FDR is that I wouldn't want to know what to draft exactly.
Peter, you've already drafted the language that I want to see forward.
I could, I could put in the packet for that meeting if you want.
And, and, and I have one more thing. And I know that we, the, the one thing that we haven't talked about here at all is whether or not we want to have any language at all about the casino revenue in the charter. I mean, we haven't discussed that.
I think we nixed that already.
Yeah, we, we, that was the first one.
Yeah, we might have put that in the charter.
We want that.
We're doing that by ordinance because of flexibility. There was a whole discussion about that. I was at that. I remember being at that meeting. It was like one of the first questions. Yeah.
No, 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 I, I mean, we nixed that first question, which talked about putting it into the general fund. But I, I don't know if it's worth us having a discussion about whether or not we want any language about it in the charter at all.
All right, suppose if I do this, when we post the meeting for next week, we'll just put any other questions posed by the council. Does that sound all right to anybody? Everybody? And then if you guys had anything in particular?
Peter, we, um, just a quick point on Counselor Hilton's point. That would be against the state constitution to stick specific accounts into the, into the, the charter for.
That's not what she's saying.
Depends, it depends.
For allocation of revenue, that would, that would be a revenue allocation decision. That's something we wouldn't be able to do.
Depends on, it depends on what it would read, but you could, you could, you could have in the charter that, just like you have restricted accounts for the general fund, or, you know, the three percent issue there, there are different things you could do within the charter.
But we couldn't allocate money within the charter. That's, like, we, we couldn't say in, you know, ten percent of this restricted account, five percent over here, and thirty percent over there. That's not something we could do.
You probably, you probably could, uh, but, you know, you may, with, when, when you're making spending decisions of that nature, you might want to do it through an ordinance just to say, you know, if something comes up, we need to take a lump of money, and we need to pay for a building that got flooded, and we need an emergency infusion of cash over there. So if it was in the charter, you'd basically be tying the hands of any future council.
Yeah, you, you, you're encumbering funds.
Yeah. I, I don't, I don't think it would be unconstitutional, though. I mean, you could address it.
You want, you want to take a look at that, though, for me?
I could take a look.
All right, but this is what I'm going to say. Um, Jeannie will advertise, um, we'll figure out the advertisement. Um, but I can put any other suggestions from the council. Does that sound all right?
Would love it.
Okay. What next week are you all available?
Thursday.
That's Randy's day off.
Is that the only day you're available?
Only day I'm available.
Yeah, these Thursdays, they have to stop.
Well, that would be the.
I cannot do Friday, I can tell you that right now.
I can't do Thursday, but that's okay, because I don't think I'm going to, I know I'm not going away, because I chose to stay home for my vacation. But I, I don't think I'm going to, I'll probably be here on Monday, but that's it. I plan most every evening.
I'll make any day but Thursday.
Wednesday.
I can make Wednesday.
Can you make Wednesday?
Oh, try switching, yeah.
Can you make Wednesday?
Yep.
Can you make Wednesday? I asked for this, so I'll make Wednesday.
Yeah, well, absolutely.
Well, it's not just that you asked for it, it's, it's to discuss the town finances.
The only other issue is that the only board is meeting here on Wednesday.
All right, so, so we'll have to see. So we can have it.
Make sure it's air-conditioned.
And we'll have to post it by.
We'd have to post it by, uh, you have to do forty-eight hours minus the weekend, so.
Monday, Monday, we can post it. All right, I'm around on Monday, because that's the day I have a couple things.
Check, check for the library. They get the new AC system.
So I'll help you with that, okay, Jeannie?
Okay.
And we'll do that together.
It's a long ride, but I'll, I'll make it.
Well, it is, yeah, that's why I have to.
So.
We, uh, as far as Wednesday, we may have some, um, we have a couple of different meetings that night. Um, so.
You or Tony may not be able to come?
Maybe not.
Oh, well, then we have a change in.
I can make Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, sadly, or Sunday.
Thursday, Thursday.
Can't make Monday, because we've got a council meeting.
Right.
Friday, Friday.
Well, can't make Friday.
Would be the best for me, but.
Uh, I will not be present.
I see.
I have strict orders from a significant other.
I'm doing sign out against them, I'm planning.
Oh, my God, yes, that's right.
So I, I could always, if, if it was limited to the FDR questions, you know, that there were some previous suggestions that the council made in the past, I could include that language for the public.
You need to be here, all right.
All I was going to suggest is for the twenty-six, I could prepare a question based on that, on a couple of different versions, which at the public hearing, you'd still be able to amend, uh, having to do with either the signature count, uh, um, I think there was some early discussion.
Can we meet earlier on, on the, the eleventh?
You know, we have to be very careful, guys, because our public hearings are twenty-six. So we have to advertise for it. We have to figure out when we have to advertise for that.
Yeah, you know, I, I was, I was confusing it with the ordinance advertisement. It is, it's a ten-day period.
Is it really a ten, or is it three now?
It's a ten. It's ten.
Tuesday night, you'd have to post it tomorrow.
No, 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 I'm talking about the public hearing.
If you did it Wednesday, uh, the eleventh, at six o'clock, you know, we could always have, you know, Tony or I come to that meeting, and as long as it ended by seven, just.
But yes, well, Peter, we have to, we have to, um, advertise it by the twelfth.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, so, you know, what actually might work is if, if you have a couple of, I could suggest some things on the FDR. Just, just have it for discussion on the twenty-six. That way, there's language to look at. If you like it, you can move it on. If you don't like it, you can just cut it all out, or you could amend it. But as long as you have some language to look at, I, I can, uh, draft some revision that would, you know, I know there was previous discussion in front of the council. I could just bring that back up again.